Okay, I hereby call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Rup?
Here.
Mr. Sawalish?
Here.
Mrs. Walters?
Here.
Mrs. Galbraith is here, Mr. Aubrecht?
Here.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything we need to do other than stay put? Okay. Okay. Can you? Can you hear me okay? Okay. And then we'll get started. Okay. Apologize for those watching the stream or in the the video later, we had a few technical difficulties. We called the meeting to order. We have done the roll call. All seven board members are present and we will continue from here. So please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the Black of United States and to the where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Rup, would you please recite the mission statement?
Sure, our mission is to empower each student to positively impact the world for a bright new future.
Thank you. We have four public comments tonight that I will read. The first one, I want to apologize. It was submitted for our December meeting. It went to the public comment email inbox and we didn't pick it up in time. So I will read it tonight. The subject is tax increase and it's from Paul and Dorita Kent. Here it is. Imagine my surprise when I read of the proposed tax increase by Crete Moni School District 201U. The district would like to raise our property taxes by 12.7%. Enrollment in our schools is dropping. Rich township recently combined three high schools into one, but still these people are seeking more money, a lot more. My wife and I have lived in Crete Township for more than 20 years in an 1,800 square foot ranch with a well and septic, no sidewalks or street lighting. And last year our tax bill to 201U was $5,407. If you add in the proposed $686 this administration would like, it brings us to almost $6,100 a year. This has been and will continue to be Illinois' problem until serious changes are made. Mismanagement and unsustainable pension systems are driving the state into insolvency. Why is it that people are leaving the state in droves for this very reason? They see the writing on the wall with no end in sight because these people don't want to make the changes necessary. They just want more money. What's pathetic is less than 5,000 students in this district. The powers at B need over $100 million to run the show. Really, what's wrong with this picture? Paul and Dorita Kent. Okay, the next three are were submitted today. The topic, the next is save the dome to the CM 201U Board of Education for public comment. Dear board members and administrators, the dome supporters are again asking you to keep in consideration our request to save the dome. A few months ago, we submitted to you a list of signers of a petition for saving the dome, which reads, encourage the school board to not demolish the dome, but to include it in their new building plans and/or make it available to community organizations for activities and events. The petition currently has just under 1,000 names. At your special meeting last week, comments were made about the demolition of the dome and that it had been decommissioned. A FOIA inquiry was made to the district last spring regarding the new elementary school layout and how the dome fits in with those plans. The May 7th reply from that FOIA request, question number two, stated that the only layout for a new K to five elementary school is attached and was done by DLA architects in 2015. That DLA layout clearly shows that the dome is included in their plan and shows the dome still attached to the new school building with storage and training rooms added on the south side of the dome. The architect's rendering also shows the dome as part of the facility. Life safety costs for the dome have been listed, but our contention is that these costs are exorbitant. We are again requesting access to site plans in the dome so that qualified contractors are able to give a true evaluation on the repairs. The argument is that the prevailing wage rate must be used, but those are figures for work done on buildings in Chicago. Get local contractors bid on the work and keep that money local. It will be much less expensive. And in your conversations at last week's special board meeting, you are considering asking for a referendum and the question has to state concisely what it is being asked for. Comments were also made that the community needs to be informed ahead of time of the details within the plan for our new buildings. The dome question should be in those details. We have a community asset in the dome. Together, we can figure out a way to preserve and use it. Sincerely, Tim Peep and Brink for the Dome Supporters. The next public comment is from Tammy Burnham and the topic is candidate forum. Good evening. I'd like to propose the student body government host a candidate forum for the April 6, 2021 consolidated elections for school board, village board, and township board candidates. Students would gain experience learning what each government entity is responsible for while learning the platforms of the candidates. I attended at least two of these in the past in the Village of Crete and they were well attended. The auditorium of the Crete Moni High School would be large enough to host, allowing enough space for social distancing, ample parking, and audio equipment. Thank you for your time. Stay well. Tammy Burnham. The final public comment is from Dave Wallace and the subject is referendum. Honorable board members, again, let me say that I have not followed all of your meetings diligently, so I may not have some information correct. I understand the board is looking to place a referendum on the ballot for two new buildings. Additionally, I understand life safety work will be done at other buildings. The following are my questions. One, will the referendum raise any portion of our property tax bill? Two, did the board have legislation passed to extend the debt service amortization from 20 to 30 years? If not, why? Three, why was the plan to decommission old schools and build a new school campus abandoned when this plan was put forth in the coffee with Dr. Kara era? Four, why has the dome and old high school been slated for demolition? If so, why hasn't this taken place? In closing, it seems the board is spending a lot of time on the subject of buildings and how to please the public. Seems time would be better spent on focusing on improving education. And if that includes demolishing old schools and building new ones, then do what should be done for the education of our children and not to satisfy adults. David Wallace. Okay, next up is action reports. We only have one item. Dr. Kara, this is under superintendent, would you like to introduce this? Then?
Sure. With much consideration and conversation, we have prepared, what was our bottom console, a question to present to the board tonight that will be put on the ballot for our April. I don't have the question in front of me. Nelson, perhaps could you read that question?
I will. Where did I? The question is proposed and I will, I'll read this, but then we will, we'll get a motion subsequently to this. But the question is currently constructed reads, shall the Board of Education of Crete Moni Community Unit School District Number 201U, Will County, Illinois, build and equip a new elementary school building in Crete, build and equip a new elementary school building in University Park, and issue bonds of said school district to the amount of $65,250,000 for the purpose of paying the cost thereof? Okay, before I ask for a motion, are there any questions or comments? We can also, I plan to have discussion after getting the motion on the table. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve a resolution providing for the submission of the proposition of issuing $65,250,000 school building bonds to the voters of the district at the consolidated election to be held on April 6, 2021?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments, discussion? On the construction of the, of the question?
Now, the only one thing I gotta say is I think we discussed it enough last week. It, I, I think when we talked about the 65 million and the 30 million after that, I still think it leaves us short on our strategic plan from what we talked about satisfying kindergarten level. So I know we have to move forward. I know it was brought up that we want to get it on the April ballot. So if this is one way to get it on there, at least get some guidance from the public. It is what it is, right? It's kind of what the one person, Mr. Wallace, said. We have to at some point make a decision and move forward. This has been sitting around a long time, I think. These schools are older and we have to find a way to, to move forward.
Bill, if I could, you, you said that it, it fails to address the kindergarten issue, but these are, these would be K through five schools.
So what I mean is in our strategic plan, if we remember back, the two points that we struggle with in our district is kindergarten and ninth grade. And the reason we struggle in kindergarten, in kindergarten is because we only allow, and I'm going to use rough numbers. I think I said last week, 200 kids, 200 children are allowed in our ELC program, Early Learning Center, which is preschool. And if I'm not mistaken, again, my numbers might be off. There's going to be four to 500 kindergartens, whatever. There's going to be, there's a huge gap there. And in one of the items in our option, a referendum R1, there was an ELC addition, which I think is important because that, you know, increases our, it, it allows everybody in our district to send their kid to preschool before they go to kindergarten. They, you know, some people can't afford Bobby Newtons. Some people can't afford, you know, daycare, they, they can't afford different things, sending them out elsewhere. I wish the district can, you know, provide that for them. And if we could get at least 80 or 90% of the kids, it would really, as they move out of preschool and kindergarten, it would really help our kindergarten teachers. So that's it. I mean, I know the numbers. I go, that's just kind of my, my sticking point on there is that I think that's really important because all the way back when we did our strategic plan, that was one of our, our, one of our issues.
Bill, if I could just, I, I just want to the advantage of a good situation with the board is it does give you some future flexibility if you want to add those things. Also, while I think we'll present the plan out there, the difference between the larger one and this one is like you said, the ELC and the pathways addition at the high school. That does not mean the board can't determine that they want to add that in at a later time to the projects too. So, so that can still be done. It doesn't mean, at least in my opinion, and again, just to keep that, doesn't mean it's off the table yet, but I think it does, it does give you some flexibility. You don't have to decide that all upfront. You can get the two new schools built, which, which I think will be a great addition to the district and then make that determination later down the road if you want to sell more bonds to address those issues also.
I, I understand that. I know that we talked that the 65 million and then I know we already passed the bonds and we were taking some of that money for life safety in a total of 99 million we talked about last, last week. But that's still that 99 left out the high school pathways and the ELC. My, my thing is are, we want, it, to me, that's almost as important as when we, when the previous boards did the middle school and they didn't look at the big picture. They looked at the money in front of them. They didn't look at the big picture and now we're short, like, let's say eight classrooms. And now that eight classrooms are going to cost us $6 million. You know what I mean? I just want to be sure we're seeing the big picture and I want to be as transparent to the, to the community because the one gentleman bring or, or woman or gentleman brought up in public comment, you know, they're concerned about their taxes. I want to make sure we're being completely transparent. That's it. That's all it's about is, is the seven of us are public officials at this point and we want to be as transparent as possible.
I agree.
Bill, this is Mo. I just want to, I don't want to say I disagree with you regarding the middle school previous board not looking at the big picture. I did, I think we did look at the big picture and for whatever reason, we chose not to move forward. So I'll just leave it at that. We didn't not neglect looking at the big picture. We knew what the big picture was, but we did not move forward to incorporate those additional classrooms.
Yeah, and I understand that. I mean, you know, the idea is that I think moving forward in any type of project like this at all, you have to get, you know, the, the idea is the board should have moved forward probably by asking the principal or the teachers or the administration, the building, what they needed. Again, I know it's a small point, but I, I'm not saying anything about previously, but I just want to make sure we are looking at the whole. Remember, everything kind of works in itself together. If two new buildings go in, how does that affect the district? If we do the high school pathways, how does that affect M C in the high school? If we do the ELC, how does it, everything kind of affects each other. So I just want to make sure we're looking at the big picture and being as transparent to the community. Because remember, 65 million today, 35, 40, 45 million tomorrow. So as long as, you know, we're all on the same page.
And I agree. This is Mo again. I agree. And I think this where Dr. Coglanese and her team, this is still part of the, this is just a, a portion of the strategic plan. Okay, the master facility plan, which is part of our strategic plan. So again, we're dissecting, we're chopping off what we can chew right now. But it should be communicated during this time period prior to the referendum being voted on, that this is what we're looking to do in the future. This is what we're looking and asking from the public right now. But in the future, this is what we're looking to do with the addition of space for our early learning childrens to be at, you know, with the, with the, the big elementary school right there on, at the existing high school. So that should not be part of, it should be part of this conversation. We should not eliminate that, that we're looking to do this, we're looking to do this, and we're looking to do this. However, this is what we're asking the voters to do for, to do this particular project. So that has to be communicated throughout this referendum period.
Well, and I just think we have to start somewhere because we have talked this to death. We have been on this subject for years upon years upon years. So I think we have to start somewhere and it's the building of new schools that requires a referendum. So there again, I think that's what we need to start with is the building of the schools. And then, you know, again, get the message out that that's not where it's going to stop for us, that we do plan on having a priority list of things that still have to be addressed. But to get schools built, we have to do a referendum. So I think that's what we need to focus on right now is getting the schools built. And like Mr. Wallace said, we need to start thinking about these kids because they have been put on the back burner long enough in these old broken down schools, and I think it's time and I think they deserve better.
And you know what, Sandy, this is Mo again. I was reading an article from a, I don't know, 2003, you know, one of a previous superintendent, she said, hey, this is what we're looking to do. Build a new elementary school in Moni, build a new high school in Crete, and this is what we can do right at this point. However, they listed CSK, they listed Crete Elementary as schools that's in dire need of repairs. And that was in 2003.
Yes.
Oh, you know, again, we have to just take slices and slices. If we can do the whole thing, which I was hoping we can do, but we can't. It just not, it just can't fit the bill right now.
Right, but we have to start somewhere, you know, we have to start somewhere.
Absolutely.
So I I agree with you that we have to start somewhere, but I also agree with Bill that we need the transparency. And unfortunately, just saying we have to build buildings and we'll tell you what the programming is later is not flying with a lot of people and I happen to be one of those people. So I'm just saying that, yes, we have to educate. Yes, we have to do all this stuff. But I also think that when we go to referendum, we should be able to provide information, specific information about what we plan to do in these buildings and we're not able to do that right now. So that is my issue with going to referendum, that and the timing. I mean, our timing isn't very good, as we all know. Things are tough out there. People are worried where their next meal is coming from. So those are my two statements on this. And, you know, whatever the pleasure of the board is, we'll do. But I think you're absolutely right. We need to, we need to get started, but how we get started needs to be transparent and solid.
Of course, I agree with that. You know, that's why I say we need to have continual information out to the public and what our plans are, so.
I just wish we would have had more information beforehand because they're looking for answers that we can't give them. And that, you know, it's going to take a lot of time to get that information out. Do we have the time and resources? Whatever we do, let's not do a postcard again. Please, God help us. People are still talking about those postcards.
Well, I think we can do postcards, but I think we have to, you know, hit newspapers, whatever. However, we have to get the message out. That's what we need to do.
Yeah, just don't waste our money. Hundreds and hundreds of people who didn't get the postcards. Let's not waste our money. Let's put it where we know it'll get to somewhere. That's what I'm saying. We have to be very careful how we, how we do this, I think. Very well planned out before we start taking steps.
So I guess Dr. Coglanese, you're going to have to roll up your sleeves and start getting community team leaders out there. And whatever needs to be done to socialize this referendum, what we need. And, and going back to you, board member Garret, as far as not knowing what we are going to do with the buildings at this time, I, I just find it unacceptable that we do not know what we're going to do with these buildings at some point along this way, sooner than later. So the public can know as far as programming and all of that. We should not be building buildings and not knowing what we're going to do with them. So
Thank you. Absolutely, Mal. That's, that's my whole point here is, you know, we're asking them to give us the money to do this without knowing what they're getting for their money on the inside of the building. And we'll make sure there's equity for every student.
Yeah, equity and equality, both, you know. But we should know that. And again, it just didn't lend itself for a detailed conversation in our last meeting, but I'm sure Dr. Coglanese has, has that as back pocket information, right, Dr. Coglanese?
Of course.
All right. So that's all I have, Nelson. Oh, one thing, as far as the 30-year amortization and I thought we, did we have our bond council on here or?
He is on.
Okay. Yeah. When are we going to get just the layout? Do we have any verbiage in our 30-year? What 30 years look like? Do we have any idea what percentage we're looking to borrow this money at? At roughly? And what 20 years amortization look like? Go ahead, Kyle.
So, so that, that's really a question for you know, PMA or financial advisor?
Yes, Bob, who is what you need for that?
With respect to the, the 30 years, you know, what I will help you with is as more than 40 other school districts have done, with, with, with the successful referendum results in hand, it's very, it has been very common for the general assembly to, to grant these, this, this relief. And here the relief you'd be looking for is, is to move from 20 years to 30 years for the amortization. And I would certainly be helping you with drafting that. But as for what that tax impact is, I, I know that, that that information could be provided to you, but it's not something that I can, I can give you.
I, I was going to say earlier, we talked at an earlier meeting that we shouldn't go to the state legislation until we had the referendum. It helps our chances, correct, Kyle?
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I couldn't think of any examples of anyone that went to the general assembly because all these debt limit exceptions or nearly all of them are, have been contingent on, are based on a successful referendum result. So it, and it's a lot of work to shepherd legislation through. It'd be, it'll be a lot of work for, for, for the superintendent to shepherd that through in, in the board. So having a successful referendum in hand at the time definitely will be easier than, than, than doing it ahead of time.
Sounds good.
So that is actually our phase two is if we can get this passed, the next step is I need to go out to legislation. That's phase two.
And Mr. Brown, I, I shared at the last board meeting that PMA analysis of the amortization and the tax impact too. So that is out there on board book also.
Okay, Ken, well, someone is getting the wrong information. I didn't want, I did not want to comment on the public comment, but as far as us increasing the taxes of 12% and that was going to happen, that they are not looking at the assessors component of their clean assets. We are not, we're, we are not increasing people homes by 12%.
No, we're not.
Not specifically, so.
Right. And I'll respond to that, Mr. Brown, too. I'll respond to that public comment, but I understand where you're coming from. Yes. Yep.
So.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, I will just echo, I think Sandy encapsulated it well, that, you know, my feeling is that we need to start somewhere. How we address equity and the enhancements for the other schools and programming, those are all things that the board can decide. But first and foremost, we need to get off the ground and get these buildings built. So I'm supportive of the referendum and moving forward and look for, look forward to success. So are there any other comments or questions before we go to a vote? Okay, hearing done. Janine, will you take the roll call?
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mrs. Walters?
Hi.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Hi.
Mr. Sawalish?
I'm going to say aye, but I just hope that we're more transparent with the public. 65 million, I don't think is the right number, but I think we need to get on a referendum for sure.
So your vote is aye?
Aye.
Okay. Mrs. Ruth?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelberth is a nay. Mr. Albrecht?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. Okay, that was the only action item we have on the agenda tonight. I've got a couple of, I'll bring them up in old business. First question to the board is for our regular January meeting next week, would you like to return to meeting in room 35 in person?
I would personally, yes.
Yes, I, I agree. I, I would like to return to in person. I would also.
What was that, Janine?
Yes, I would like to do in person.
And, and Ken, I think on the agenda next week, you're going to present some, some of the proposed kind of pro forma new board reports.
I am, yeah.
And that would probably be easier done in person.
It would be a heck of a lot easier to do in person. And I'll have hard copies for people too, so.
Okay, did you say board reports, Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Like, what are we talking about?
Financial reports, new, new financial reports.
Oh, financial, okay.
Yeah, financial reports or new financial reports.
Board reports, I wasn't quite sure what that meant.
No, it's financial reports.
Okay.
So Brian and I will be in attendance to, to present those.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so you will work to securing room 35 for.
I, I would recommend President Albrecht that we actually use the high school. I'm a little gun shy at this point. A lot has been going on around me, a lot of sickness and death with friends and family over the last couple of weeks. It's been overwhelming to say the least. And I'm just, I'm just concerned that if we are in room 35 and that's a regular board meeting and we get the issues with teachers possibly returning and all of that, that we might get an influx of people there for public comments. And the last time that happened, I think we was kind of, we was kind of really condensed. So that's just me.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll take that under, Carol, we can talk about that and. Okay. Um, the, the other item, now that we have the referendum, we're putting the referendum on the ballot. There are certain do's and don'ts for board members during this period between now and the election. And we'll have John Izzo from Hauser Izzo attend next week to kind of give us all the, the rules for the road going forward during this period. So.
Oh, thank you. Now, I appreciate that because I even, I wanted to ask and I wasn't even sure if I was able to ask a question. So that'll be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I talked with Dr. Kara about that today and she's already reached out to John and he, he's available to attend. So.
I've also invited our consultant, Joe Donovan, to come as well, just so that you can ask some questions. And we can kind of review with you the work that we've gotten done already and things that we'll start to send out shortly. We will let you as a board take a look before we send things. But press release is one of them and so forth. So we want to advise you of that. So he'll be here as well.
Okay. Any other old business?
Yeah, one thing, if I could, I think it's for Ms. Perkins. So if we read our FYI, the middle school and the high school are still in the low 80 percentile range of attendance. Is there anything we can be done with that? I understand that it's grueling and it's been a long time, but the elementary schools are still doing well, but the middle school and the high school. The question is, some of these seniors, you know, how do they, in eighth grades, how do they move to the next grade if they're not on? It's a low, it's a low number.
So one of the new interventions that we're working with, with the middle school and high school is looking at kids that are in, students that are in, we're going to call them, we have them in a green tier, yellow tier, or red tier. And so the students that are missing coursework for their credits and in jeopardy of not receiving their credits, we are taking a look at doing some one-on-one interventions with those students. As you know, for reading the FYI, you know, administration has gone out to their homes, they've reached out to their parents. And there are different situations with family members being sick and all of that is taken into consideration. However, that student is still marked absent, even though we know that there are home situations that they cannot control. But we are working with them to make sure that, and teachers are making phone calls on a daily basis to make sure their work is being turned in. And it could be at the high school level, maybe a student has gone to half of their class for the day, but they work in the afternoon. So each student has a story. And we are working with each family and each student about their story.
Okay, that's good. As long as they're all being addressed and, and if they need help, let's want to make sure that we are getting the help to them.
We are.
Thank you.
Any other old business? Any new business?
Yeah, I have one more. Sorry, sorry to hear that. Karen, Dr. Coglanese, can you do me a favor? So there seems to be some disconnect with, with parents on, on what's, you know, hybrid and remote or people in the community. Can you just answer a couple of questions, I guess? I know they're simple, but every parent in the district has the opportunity to choose remote or hybrid, correct?
That is correct. And we just recently sent out another survey asking them if they would like to continue with remote or hybrid for the remainder of the year. So everybody has a choice.
So hybrid means the kids are coming back to school, they're still going to bring their Chromebooks in like they normally would, correct?
That's correct.
And they're going to just be in class learning? And then the teacher may or may not have to teach remotely and in class, right?
Yes.
Working out the details on that?
Yeah, John, tell if you want to add anything to that. But we, we, each of the buildings has a site plan that spells out exactly what will take place. But John, tell, would you like to add to that?
And, and the only reason I ask that question is so that everybody that's watching understands what hybrid actually means. Cause some of them are, don't know what to pick. If they don't, you know what I'm saying? So I'd rather at least explain it.
Yeah. So the details for each site, because it looks different depending on which building you are at. And each school has their own site plans. And in those hybrid site plans, it does require that our teachers teach simultaneously. So they will be teaching students remotely and students that are in front of them face to face. And so it could look very different that I have, I teach to my whole group. And then I send my students off to do breakout sessions that are at home remotely. And then I'm doing small group in the classroom. And it could be interaction between, you know, students that are in the classroom and collaborating with students at home. But the general picture of what hybrid looks like and how many days students will be in attendance at a particular building is in those site plans.
Okay, good. And those are available on the district website?
Those are available on the district website. And the teachers have the, I'm going to say the electronic devices that are need, needed to make hybrid work should we be, be able to return to school.
Okay, thank you.
Perkins, can I ask one question on that?
Yes, ma'am.
What if a family has four children in the district? Can they choose individually for each child which way they want to go?
Yes. So we understand the need that every child needs something different. Maybe your middle school student, you want them at school, but you want your kindergartner still at home, working remotely. So no matter how many students you have in the district, you get to choose what you would like for each of your children.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's a great question. Okay, Bill, any other? Any other questions?
All good, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, any other new business? Okay, we don't have a need for closed session tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Seven eleven, Nelson, seven eleven.
Seven eleven. Get your slurpee.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Carol, for attending tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.